I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the all for vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk, Iva Nelson, for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
Yes, President.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilman Wilson is absent today. Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Latham to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you that you have given us the gift of life, health, and strength today. We thank you that you are faithful, you are merciful, you are loving, and you are kind. We thank you that you have assigned to our hands of the job of seeing of the affairs of our city, of our districts. And so, we ask your guidance. We know that you are omnipotent, you are all-powerful, you are omnipresent, you are everywhere, and you are omniscient, you know all things. And so, we ask that you would lead us and guide us, that your will will prevail in this city. Thank you for our mayor and administration. Thank you for the city council. Thank you for the city workers. We thank you for our city at large. And we thank you for what you've already done, for what you are doing, and the things that you are going to do. We have victory today through Christ Jesus. And so, we ask that we call those things that be not as though they were. We are victorious, and we ask this in your Son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair, we entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on June 13th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of June 9th through 15th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Agenda item 7 is reserved for proclamations and commendations. We have none today, but we do have an important announcement and want to introduce one of our newest employees, and Brett Johnson's going to do that for us.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce the council to Mr. Anthony Tarver. He is going to be the new manager of the Northeast Alabama Regional Airport, otherwise known as the Gadsden Airport. An exciting announcement that Mayor Ford made at the end of last week. He put together a search committee inclusive of the Airport Authority Board, city employees, and then an airport consultant. We took in about over 30 applications from throughout the nation for this position and interviewed three finalists and ultimately went with Mr. Tarver, who happens to be a local, lives in Edgewall County, aviation professional. And the whole vision for Mayor Ford has been that very few people are airport management experts and aviation experts. And so, to adequately manage that airport, leverage its assets, secure federal and state funding, and do all the things that are necessary for economic development and growth, we need someone at the helm who really knows airports, and that's Mr. Tarver. A little bit I'll tell you about him, and then I'll let him introduce himself further. Bachelor's degree in aviation management from University of Central Missouri. He's been, he's a licensed private pilot. He has been at several, what we call general aviation airports, which is the same thing that the Gadsden Airport is, and now is currently the Airport Operations Supervisor at Birmingham Shuttlesworth International, which is, of course, a commercial service airport. So, without further ado, Mr. Tarver.
Good morning, everybody. How are y'all?
Good morning.
So, my vision and plan is to bring the Gadsden Airport out of the dark ages into the light. That airport has been starved far too long. My background, being in general aviation airports, we're able to point in the right direction with the help of everybody and the support. And it's not going to happen overnight, but we're definitely going to get things moving real, real quickly and smoothly. So, I'm just grateful for the opportunity. I'm currently the Airport Operations Supervisor down at Birmingham. I was born in Birmingham, so, born and raised in Alabama. So, we look to get things going, and I'm very excited for the opportunity. And I'm getting ready to leave because I got to go to work down in Birmingham. So, it's nice meeting you all, and I look forward to seeing y'all in the future, so.
Mr. Tarver, it's, uh, thank you. Just on behalf of the city council, we're excited to have you join our team, and we look forward to great things. Heard a lot of wonderful things about you and your family, and just welcome to City of Gadsden, and Godspeed to you. We look forward to working with you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, item 8 is, comes under unfinished business. 8A is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property. This ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. The Gadsden Cultural Arts Foundation has offered $30,000 for the Harden Center located at 501 Broad Street and the Temple Beth Israel property located at 761 Chestnut Street. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstained.
We have one abstention. Motion carries to adopt.
All right, item 9, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving alcoholic beverage license. It's for Harp &amp; Clover LLC, DBA Harp &amp; Clover, located at 124 Court Street in District 3, has applied for a restaurant retail liquor license. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 10, our next public hearing is a resolution approving alcoholic beverage license. OM Mart LLC, DBA Titan, located at 601 Walnut Street in District 5, has applied for a retail beer and table wine license off premises only. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 11, our final public hearing is a resolution approving alcoholic beverage license. Emery Wings 2 LLC, DBA Coupe de Ville, located at 202 Albert Raines Boulevard in District 3, has applied for a retail, a restaurant retail liquor license. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
We've got two so moves.
Second.
And we got a second. Okay. All right, thanks. Is there any, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 12 is a resolution authorizing economic development agreement with Urschig Properties Incorporated, DBA Urschig LLC, to locate a Roses Discount Store at 2509 West Meagan Boulevard. This is to rebate 2% of the city's 5% sales tax proceeds for a period of four years from the opening date or until a total of $250,000 has been paid to the developer, whichever comes first. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 13 comes under first readings. This is an ordinance amending City Code Section 2.2. This amends the code to describe a new design for the city seal and adds language that the city shall have and maintain an official logo. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Now, the ordinance reviewed in last week's council meeting did not address the city flag, so we'll need a motion to substitute the Point 1 version if we want to move forward with this.
I'm going to make a motion to substitute the Point 1 version to Point 2.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All right. Any discussion? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to substitute the amended ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to substitute.
Just a point of clarification. What we found out in reviewing this is that our ordinances did not have a mention of a flag, and we've had a city flag for decades. There's one flying out in front of the building here, and there's one over here. So, we've memorialized that, I believe is the right way to say that, to make that reflective in our book of ordinances. So, that's what you saw us do just then. Item 14 is reserved for new business. I believe we have one item for new business?
Uh, yes. Mr. President, I want to make a motion that we suspend the rules today and actually approve bid number 3515. That's the surfacing project from East Meagan all the way down to Goodyear Avenue.
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, because then it's been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, that was a, to further clarify, that's a resurfacing project from the ground up in that right, Heath. It's going to be a full restoration of Hope Street from Meagan Boulevard to Goodyear Avenue, $972,720. Did I understand, Heath, that comes from federal monies?
Yes, sir. That is part of the community development block grant that we, we receive.
All right, thank you. And the reason why we wanted to suspend the rules and go ahead and get that going is if you've traveled Hope Street in recent time, I called it during the pre-council meeting, it goes ba-bump, ba-bump. It's like riding over railroad tracks or whatever. So, sorely needed, and we're glad to get that project started in District 1 and District 2 here in the City of Gadsden, over in East Gadsden. So, thank you, Councilwoman Latham and Councilman Smith for bringing that forward today. Item 15 is citizen request to speak. Our first is L. Curtis Dickerson. And, Mr. Dickerson, are you here? All right. As you come forward, if you'll state your name and address at the podium, but I want to, you're going to speak, you'll have five minutes, and you're going to speak on security and specifically fencing the old school on Walnut Street, I'm assuming the old Gadsden High School.
Yes, old Gads.
Near the gym, and then you're going to speak on car fines, excessive noise, racing, burnout pollution, endangerment. And then the third is police patrol in the area of Walnut and 12th through 14th Streets. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Uh, yes. Welcome to the city council. My name is Curtis Dickerson. And, as you know, on 12th Street and Walnut is the city school. It's a landmark. And, um, it's got a fenced-in area in the front parking lot, and if you go on around to the left side, there's a area that has been broken into three times, two windows and a door. Okay? I would like to see that area fenced in for more security, protect the city property. What started this was, two weeks ago on Sunday at 7:00, there was about 100 people meet in the parking lot just on down the street from this area. Okay? 100 people. I don't think they were, had a permit, and they were also gathering across the street from this house. So, the police were called. There was a lot of cars, probably about 12 cars doing burnouts and putting these 100 people in danger. Okay? The police, that's the streets that were burned out, reckless driving, and there's another picture, and there is more pictures. And the police did a fine job of dispersing the group, but of course, they leave, they come back, they drive around the block, they come back, and this Sunday was very quiet. So, the police has done a very good job. I would like to see them to do more tickets to create revenue for the city, be stricter about excessive noise and burnouts and putting people in jeopardy. And, uh, guess what? I would like to have this city consider.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
I appreciate you coming. And I will point out that the high school, the old Gadsden High School, and the gym there is, that property is actually owned by the Board of Education. So, we will let them know. We'll share this information with them also, so they'll be aware of their property situation there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, next is asked to speak is James Peters. Mr. Peters? Is Mr. Peters here? Okay. I don't see a show of hands, so I guess Mr. Peters couldn't make it today. Item 16 is department reports, committees, and boards. Do we have any of those this morning? All right, seeing none, we'll go to item 17, remarks by the mayor and council. Mr. Johnson, do you have, always referred to Brett Johnson. Brett, so everybody knows, he's the chief of staff for Mayor Ford.
Yes, sir. A couple of updates. First, Mayor Ford is not here today because he is traveling, and without giving away too much detail, the travel he's undergoing will result in a pretty major announcement very, very soon. So, in lieu of him being here, I want to just give you a couple of quick updates. The city is currently going through the process of employee evaluations for the first time in actually about a decade, we've discovered. So, Mayor Ford came in and realized it's very important for every employee to know where they stand, and for every supervisor to understand where their employees stand so that we can all be working toward improvement. And so, that's undergoing currently through the month of June. You may have heard about the congressional redistricting saga that's going on throughout the state of Alabama. One thing that we've been looking into is how that would impact Edgewall County and Gadsden. There are a couple of proposals out there that float. Edgewall County on the line of District 4, which is Congressman Aderhold, and District 3, which is Congressman Rogers. Both of them are great congressmen, individuals representing the state of Alabama. But for the City of Gadsden and for Edgewall County, you know, we've developed a pretty strong relationship with a pretty senior member of Congress in Robert Aderhold. And so, the push would be, the request of the committee that'll be taking that up down in Montgomery, is that we stay in Congressional District 4 with Congressman Aderhold. As you know, we just recently made several big announcements about support coming from his office. So, you'll be hearing more about that coming down the road. And that's all I have for now.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good luck, Mayor Ford. All right, now we'll hear from the council. We're jumping around a little bit. Want to ask Councilman Avery, would you care to go first this morning?
Thank you. District 3 district meeting is going to be canceled for this evening in lieu of another event that'll be going on at the Falls. So, I would push for those district members that was coming to the meeting to be at the Naklelu Pavilion. 5:00, the doors will be open. 5:30, I think food would be served. The next district meeting will be on July the 18th at 6:00 PM. So, July the 18th at 6:00 PM, but this district meeting for this Tuesday, 6:00 PM, is canceled. District 3 cleanup is still on schedule for this coming Sunday, June the 25th, from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM. We will meet up at the North Gadsden Park down by Pastor Councilman Smith Church, right across the street. For those that don't know about North Gadsden Park, to kind of give you a area or some sites to recognize it. And then I think it's Thompson School, same street Thompson School is on. All right, a map will be given out where we'll go, where we'll start. We'll start at the tip of, the ending of District 3, which is right across the street from the Turnin' Interest to Oakley State. So, we'll be across the street, start across the street from there and work our way on down. Okay? And so, you don't need any gloves unless you have some personal type gloves. You know, we have all accessories, gloves, vests, safety vests, pickup sticks, and garbage bags. So, we need other groups to kind of blend in with us. We need a group to serve food. I think we, the Democrat women has jumped on board with us. We have voter registration from another group, and Alabama Power has partnered with us. So, we have some things from Alabama Power. Keep Edgewall Beautiful along with Keep Alabama Beautiful, and Gadsden City Football Team and Boys Basketball Team as well has partnered with us. I want to say the track team also. So, volunteers are still needed. This is the one that we're doing for June. July, we will do our one for the Tuscaloosa Avenue area, and then we'll end August with doing one that will consist of the west side of District 3. Okay? So, we'll do one for these summer months. Mr. Johnson hit on it, tapped on it a little bit. Recently, the Supreme Court ruled that Alabama Electoral Map was unlawfully continued to dilute black voters, voters' power. I am encouraged by this. It was a 4-5 ruling, and the Chief Justice wrote the opinion. He has often said that race should not be considered in many ways, but he said here, for the majority, race can and sometimes should be considered. And we have one out of seven congressional seats that is African-American with a 25% rate of African-American in the state of Alabama. So, hopefully, this will open up another door. I'm encouraged as well, as we saw up Juneteenth celebration, we want to thank Carver Community Revitalization for their event on Saturday. That was between a sum number of 250 to 300 people that was on the ground total. I know there was 30-plus vendors that was there. Great performance by Zola Infinitys. So, thank all of those people that came out to celebrate that. On yesterday, there was a 50-plus choir celebration at the East Gadsden, First Baptist Church in Green Pastures celebration. That was wonderful as well with great singing and a spirit-filled event. The last event that is scheduled is a banquet, 2023 Juneteenth Celebration that will be held at Antioch Family Life Center in East Gadsden on East Broad, on the tail end of East Broad. It will begin at 6:00 PM on June the 23rd. We're still seeing and facing the denial of systemic race system, constantly seeing paper genocide, and where African-Americans' history is being denied to children in schools and books off shelves that reads of black history. Whatever we don't talk about is how, one of the things that we don't talk about is how race was being used to erase, to erase black people. In 1901, when Alabama Constitution was being rewritten, Convention Chair John Knox said that the goal, the goal was to establish white supremacy in this state. Okay? That's 1901. Yes, it is 2023, 122 years later, and whereas some has changed, we still have a way to go. This is why black issues are important to me, and I am a believer that if we tackle black issues, we will then tackle economic depression. We will tackle housing. We will tackle homelessness. We will tackle hunger, and we will tackle a plethora of issues that we have that faces our city and our communities, which is a system failure. So, it's not just only on individuals that have a one-track mindset, but it's on a system that also, that has adopted that mindset. I implore each and every one of us to look at ourselves within and see what we can do to help one another as we move forward together in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilwoman Minatra?
We had this morning a Public Works Committee meeting, and we are working very hard to put together one bit of information that we feel is sometimes difficult to find out about, and that is what we can and can't do as it relates to our garbage, trash pickups, recycling. We're putting together a, an item that will actually go out to our community so that we spell out exactly what the guidelines are for this, because as we have all said, the trash, the trash and the litter situation in Gadsden, it needs help, and it needs help from every one of us. So, we are working to get that together and to get it out to all citizens. Thank you.
Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, thanks to the mayor and the mayor's staff, all of our fellow council members. Thank you all for what you're doing for your districts and for the city as well. All the department heads, we appreciate you. You know, I'm an optimist, and I too also attended the same program Councilman Avery mentioned on yesterday. Just the great Juneteenth programs, as I sat there and listened to the choirs, I was just really grateful. When I think about the 13th, 14th, and 15th Amendment to the Constitution, freeing the slaves, giving us citizenships, and giving us the right to vote, there's been a lot of progression by African-Americans, whether we go all the way back to Booker T., Madam C.J. Walker, W.E.B. Du Bois, James Cone, Howard Thurman, the list goes on and on. A lot of great things have happened. We still have a long way to go, but I'm excited about the opportunities that we all now have together. I think if we keep pressing on, we've had African-American President, President Obama. So, we've come a long way, but we still have a long way to go. But I want to give a shout out to Juneteenth that we celebrated on Monday, which was a great day, and we want to make sure that we always continue to, to talk about that. Thank you, Mr. President. One other thing, let's remember Ruth Moffett, her father passed. Those that don't know, Ruth is not from here. So, we're her extended family. So, those who can reach out to Ruth Moffett, who worked in the mayor's office, let's make sure we send our condolences to her. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for mentioning that, Councilman Smith. Councilman Robinson?
I don't have anything today, Mr. President. I appreciate it.
The barbarian sharing?
Barbarian was, yeah, it went off without a hitch. I apologize. I would like to thank Christina Richardson and all her staff up there. I've heard nothing but good things. I've heard it was the best one yet. So, a lot of people up at Naklelu Falls this past Saturday having a good time and doing stuff that I can't no longer do anymore.
That's right. I actually went up there, and there were so many people. I wanted to get, after walking from the car to the kind of the middle area, I wanted one of those ice cream cone thing, Fritos.
Fritos, yes, yeah.
And the line was so long, I didn't get my Fritos pop. So, it was just, it was too, I couldn't wait that long. But it was a great crowd, beautiful day, and big thanks for our parts and wreck people. They did a wonderful job, and everybody else involved.
Thank you for reminding me.
Oh, you're welcome. That was a great, that was a great day. And that Councilwoman Latham?
Thank you, President Beck. Let me say thank you to those of you who are here today for our council meeting, whether in person or through social media. Thank you for being here. Thank you for the citizen comments, concerns that you have. And I want to take the opportunity to welcome the new airport management. And I want to take the opportunity to welcome the new airport manager. I didn't get the name, whether it was Tarva or Carver, but want to welcome him and look forward to the job that he's going to do with our city and with our airport. I know it's been mentioned twice, but it would be remiss of me not to say something because I do have a music background. Shout out to Jadrian Rigby, who pulled off a 50-plus voice choir, and that is very difficult to do with people from different backgrounds and wisdom and knowledge of music, but it was an awesome program and very well attended. So shout out to him. And I know that we do have, the banquet is going on next week, and I'm, I have previous engagement and won't be able to be there, but we encourage you to participate with that. Good day of government, grateful for the job that we're doing, the mayor is doing, and look forward to doing even bigger and greater things. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, two announcements due to yesterday's Juneteenth holiday. Monday's garbage route is being collected today, and Tuesday's route will be collected on Wednesday. And the Independence Day Firework Show hosted by the Gadsden Edgewall Patriots Association will take place on Tuesday, July 4th at 9:00 PM. It's located over here, if you get on this side of the river, really any side, it goes so high, but you can see it, it's usually done over here, either in the parking lot, at the venue, or over here at the, at the boat ramp where they shoot the fireworks. Want to, a real quick echo, the Barbarian Challenge, what a great day for Gadsden. Over 1,000 people came to participate. It's just unbelievable to see how, that many people at Nakaloo Falls. I don't see how the city does it, the workers that pull it off, but thank you to all of those that are involved in that. Last Wednesday, I hosted the City Council President of Jasper, Alabama, Jennifer Williams-Smith. She wanted to come, look and see and learn about the Beautiful Rainbow Cafe at the Gadsden Public Library. She had heard a little bit about it. She works with special needs students in Jasper, and I want to thank Chip Rowan and his staff and the students there for a wonderful lunch. If you haven't eaten lunch at the Beautiful Rainbow Cafe at the Gadsden Public Library on College, on South College Street, please do so. What a great experience it is. The food is fantastic, and the students there are just wonderful. Chip Rowan and his folks there do a great job. Also, we had lunch with Jonathan and Becca Gardner, who have the Wendy Van Hooten Teaching Garden. They're in our public schools. They also work in conjunction with the Beautiful Rainbow Cafe to source their, their ingredients for their, their food over there. She wanted to, Ms. Council President Smith wanted to learn about that program. And from there, we went to Downtown Gadsden Incorporated, DGI. She wanted to meet with Kay Moore. She'd heard great things from her downtown person in Jasper about our downtown person, and so it was a great time. Kay educated her on some things we're doing here, shared some information. She was very grateful. And then last but not least, Council President Smith also works in dance with special needs students. She wanted to meet Lindsay and Azalia McCray at the Center for Cultural Arts. So Tom Banks, who's here today, was nice enough to give us a guided tour of that fabulous facility, and they were, Tom, they were so grateful, and they were so blown away by the Center for Cultural Arts. And then they were really blown away when they spent about 20 minutes with Lindsay and Azalia to learn all the things. There's 500 students in the Downtown Dance Conservatory, and she was excited to hear about all the things and the programs that, that are going on. And one of the things she just was really blown away is that nobody's turned away. Tom was real strong in pointing that out, that any, anybody that comes to the Center for Cultural Arts for any kind of music lessons, voice lessons, any of the things that are going on there, the dance to the Downtown Dance Conservatory, as Tom says, we just find a way to make it work. So Tom, thanks for that kind of heart for our community, how you guys give back year in and year out, some 30-plus years of, of being a staple in Downtown Gadsden, and not only for Gadsden, but for the county and the surrounding counties that come and take advantage of the Center for Cultural Arts. So it was a good day, and I've had great thank you notes from Council President Smith. She, she wants to take a lot of what we're doing in Gadsden to Jasper, so maybe that'll happen. We'll have some great success stories with, with our kind of new sister city, Jasper, Alabama. So with that being said, we will be adjourned.